Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting for Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. Everybody could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reprimanding the righteous stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please. Mr. Grigsby here. Mrs. McCarthy.
Here.
Mrs. Saxton.
Here.
Mrs. Tamira.
Here.
Mr. Baca here. Finalization of the agenda, is there anything to add and or delete?
The agenda is final, it's presented.
Thank you. We'll move right into the superintendent's report.
Excellent. Don't count wasting any time, I would invite Mrs. Andrea Vance to the podium to recognize the ECLC Students of the Month.
Good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure tonight of introducing, I'm gonna start with our kindergartner, Mia Mia Yucassini, I'm gonna make sure I'm pronouncing that right. Mia is in Mrs. Browning's classroom and Mrs. Browning says Mia is such a joy to have in class this year. She exhibits all the qualities of a Ranger Strong student. Mia comes to school every day with a positive attitude and enthusiasm to learn. She is kind and helpful to all her peers and adults as well. I can always count on her to lend a helping hand and she initiates positive praise to her peers and is a friend to all. Mia works hard every day and consistently participates in classroom activities while putting forth her best effort into all she does. We look forward to seeing her continued success through the rest of the school year. And just a quick note, we were having a discussion about apples and Mia's favorite apple is a green one, so if anybody else has one. So congratulations to Mia. And our next student of the month is in Mrs. Deed's preschool classroom and that is Austin Malito and I believe Austin is joining us via Zoom tonight. And Austin's teacher writes that Austin is a perfect candidate for student of the month because of his hard work, great attitude and helpful nature. He enjoys trying new things and is always coming in with a smile on his face. He makes friends easily and is eager to help his friends if they feel sad or if they need a hand. He has an excellent cleaner-upper and always has to keep his room tidy and organized. So Austin, you need to come to my house to help. We love having Austin as a great example for other students in the classroom and we are so lucky he is with Mrs. Deed's and in our building this year. Congratulations to Austin. I'd like to introduce Mrs. after technique from Liberty.
So I want to start with our first grade student of the month, Ryan Trapp. Ryan's family is joining us on Zoom. Ryan's in first grade in Mr. Ditzler's class and Mr. Ditzler says that Ryan is the definition of Ranger Strong. He consistently gives his best effort, participates in class and rises to challenges. He is a student who very much deserves recognition for his efforts. Way to go, Ryan. And our second grade student of the month is Emmy Canannon. Emmy is new to Liberty and being a new student, she has done an outstanding job of getting along with and supporting her peers. She is always putting her best foot forward to show what she knows and her classroom participation, partner work and individual accomplishments are outstanding. In addition, she serves as a wonderful character strong model for her actions every day. Congratulations, Emmy. Emmy, come on up. Can I read them again?
Yes.
Hi Emmy. So this is Emmy, our second grade student of the month and she is in second grade in Miss Key's class. So Miss Key says that Emmy is a new student to Liberty and she's done an outstanding job of getting along and supporting her peers. She's always putting her best foot forward to show what she knows and her classroom participation, partner work and individual accomplishments are outstanding. In addition, she serves as a wonderful character strong model through her actions every day. Congratulations, Emmy.
Now we'll have Mr. King from the academic center.
Good evening. See this? That's like Ranger Strong right there, she knows exactly what's going on here. Would you like to read this or should... Oh. Alright, so with me is Kylie Coon, one of our rock stars. She is from Four Blue, Four Blue nominated, heard for our Students of the Month. And I know I say this a lot, but it truly hits home. We have close to 1900 students and we choose four a month, so these are like... And as I think 28 people just said there, just a few minutes ago, we have amazing students here at North Ridgeville. And sometimes choosing is really hard, but we have some great ones tonight. So here is what Four Blue had to say about Kylie. Kylie is a great example of what it means to be Ranger Strong. She is always willing to help around the classroom or lend a classmate or charger or supplies. She shows teamwork and respect with her classmates when working with others. She listens well to those around her and always has a kind word for everyone. She can work well with any student and I know that she will always do her best and get along with everyone. She takes ownership of her learning each day by being prepared, volunteering in class and completing her work very well. Kylie is a sweet young lady and always does her best. She is kind-hearted and always a ray of sunshine in the room. She is a true joy to have in class. Next up, we have Sarah Slack, joining us from Six Orange. Alright, Sarah exemplifies what it means to be Ranger Strong. She is conscientious about her academics and extremely respectful towards her peers, adults and the Ranger community. She takes ownership over her own learning. Sarah acts as a leader in the classroom, both identifying and assisting with classroom tasks that are needed and addresses them. The Six Orange Studio is privileged to have Sarah Slack as part of our studio family. Thank you for being Ranger Strong, Sarah. And last but not least, we have Erin, come on up. Erin joins us from Eight Teal. Erin upholds the Ranger Strong motto in all aspects of the word. Erin serves others through her willingness to help explain concepts to peers and within activities. Erin demonstrates teamwork through her collaboration with peers on the same activities as well as shows respect to all others when doing so. Erin takes ownership of her learning by volunteering in class and sets high expectations for herself. Erin understands the necessity of hard work and determination in order to succeed in her education. It is a pleasure to have Erin part of the Teal Studio and the team cannot wait to see what the rest of the school year will bring. Congratulations on being student of the month and always stay Ranger Strong. Congratulations. And as I've mentioned last month, as part of our PBIS initiatives this year, we're also recognizing students put forward by different departments within the building. And this, last month was our nursing department, this month is our custodial department. Our custodial department chose our three-four recycling team and our custodial team had this to say about our recycling team who is joining us via Zoom. The third and fourth grade intensive needs students, Jackson, Charlotte, Mason, Jacob and Daniel have shown the attribute of service for the schools by assisting the custodial crew and picking up recyclables every Friday morning. They have shown enthusiasm and focus when completing this task. Each student has stayed on task and focused with the other students in the group. The kids demonstrate teamwork by working together to empty all of the recycling in the whole fourth grade area. It has been a pleasure having these folks assist us every Friday. Thank you for that and keeping us Ranger Strong and recycling. I'd like to introduce Melissa Durkin from RHTA.
Hello. Thank you for having us here. Vincent is not able to join us tonight, so he's saying to come for the December meeting so that we can recognize Vincent. But I am very excited to have Madeline Maloney here with me tonight. And one of the benefits of being at RHTA is I get to see the kids grow over the years and how they mature. And Maddie has been amazing. When she started with us, she was very reserved and very shy and we had to kind of get you out of your shell a little bit, huh? But she has really worked on her confidence throughout her time at Ranger High Tech Academy and outside of school with her modeling and origami owl business and things like that to try to build that happening. So you're doing wonderful. And Coach DeCiccio nominated you and the things that she had to say made me feel like you really, really nailed it with that. So this is what Coach DeCiccio had to say about Maddie. Maddie is an extremely kind learner. She is always respectful to her teachers, peers and other staff members. She works well in any group she is placed. Maddie has done a really nice job of asking questions and being an active participant in math class. Keep up the good work, Maddie. Thanks for being Ranger Strong. I would like to introduce Mr. Mueller from the high school to recognize the high school leaders of the month.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It is certainly my honor to introduce two more outstanding seniors from North Ridgeville High School. And each month, it's a real journey for me because I get to meet and get to know more of our seniors. This month, our first senior I'm gonna introduce is Alyssa Gelski. Alyssa could not be with us tonight and I'll explain why. But she was nominated by our staff. She participates in gymnastics, track, lacrosse and is a member of Varsity R. She's kind to everyone she comes into contact with. She is an office aide and she is not afraid to ask her principal very tough questions, which sometimes I'm unable to answer. Her favorite class is living on your own. She's undecided on a college next year, but her dream school is UCLA. Alyssa hopes to become an entrepreneur and own a business of some sort. Her spirit animal is the orca whale, for its toughness, I'm sure. We're happy to have Alyssa as a student and cannot wait to see what she achieves in the future. Alyssa could not be with us tonight because she works at Fiesta's Jalapenos and I wore my Taco Tuesday tie. She asked me to make sure I invited everybody in the audience and I'm a board. Just Jalapenos for Taco Tuesday. Alyssa Gelski. Our next student is Jake Boynar.
I'm gonna guess that for this section.
Are you?
Yeah.
This guy does it all. So, so we open our nominations to staff and it's interesting for me to see who they come up with and who they recognize. And it lets me say, okay, I gotta find out this kid's story and then present them to the community and the Board of Education. And I did and I'll share some of what I found out. But this morning I went and saw him out in math class, said, "Come here Jake." Said, "I gotta be able to tell the board that I know you better than I know your mom." And I met his mom a couple of months ago working with the art committee. And, and you know, it's kind of ironic to me when I tell you a story that here he is a senior, look at this guy. Flanked by mom and dad. Ladies and gentlemen, for you who brought your students tonight, that's what it's all about. That's what, and he knows it. Let me tell you something about Jake Boynar. He's the perfect example of being Ranger Strong. He's in many AP classes as well as symphonic band. His favorite class is chemistry. He's on the NRHS golf team, baseball team and basketball team. He's a member of Champions for Life, Varsity R, NRCS Endowment Fund, National Honor Society and Student Council. I looked at Jake's records this morning. What I found is in our most rigorous academic courses, over the last six years, Jake Boynar has three classes that even show a B, which he then converted to As. Six years, that's as far as I looked. He is kind to everyone, has a positive attitude that rubs off on others. And what I've found about Jake is one of his great qualities is his humility. He gave us a picture, the first picture that we had on his nomination. And after a couple of days, he said to Teresa Blair, "Look, no use this one." The first one made it look like all about him. This picture shows him in the world, in nature, with one of his jerseys on. That, that's who Jake is. He's already committed to Gannon University next fall. After college, Jake hopes to play Major League Baseball. What a great fall we've had. His spiritual, spirit animal is a draft, go figure. And he really is a stellar example of being Ranger Strong and we're lucky to call him an asset at North Ridgeville High School. And, and I have to say, I'm humbled to know Jake Boynar and my life is richer to have students and friends like Jake and the Boynars. Congratulations Jake.
Congratulations to all of our Students of the Month. You truly are amazing examples of Ranger Strong. And for our little guys, you really have a great example as you look at some of our older students of what you have to look forward to and we are so very proud of each and every one of you. Now I turn it over to Mrs. Annie Hestadler, who is going to introduce our two staff members for the month of November.
Nice that I always get to call up Mr. Mueller. But I too am honored this evening to introduce some staff members that have done an outstanding job for us. And so on behalf of the Board of Education, it is my pleasure to congratulate two staff members for their selection as NRCS November staff members of the month. Each month, the Board of Education recognizes staff members who have shown extreme care, demonstrated excellence and/or provided exemplary professionalism. These nominations may come from students, parents, colleagues or administrators. Alyssa and Roger, join me up here, please. So this month's first award winner is Miss Alyssa Tonason. Miss Tonason was hired first in 2021 as a seventh grade math teacher at the Academic Center. Miss Tonason is a 2017 graduate of Olmsted Falls High School. And prior to her hire here, she was a lead math teacher at Math Plus Academy. She was an Ohio State University recruitment post captain, a nanny for three children during the pandemic and a tutor for students in grades five through 12. Since joining the educational staff here in North Ridgeville, Miss Tonason has been a summer school teacher, a math and reading tutor and a student council advisor. Alyssa was nominated by one of her colleagues who had this to say about her. Alyssa has been a great addition to the math department. She has gone above and beyond in creating and revamping the curriculum. She has such a positive energy and it shines through as she teaches kids math. She has not only revamped and created new lessons, but she has become an expert in using Agilastic to find higher level questions for our students. She volunteers for things in the district. She runs the entire PBIS store and still has time to help students during her free time. As a newer teacher to the building, she has really shown how dedicated she is to the community. Congratulations Alyssa and thank you for your dedication. Our second employee this evening is Mr. Roger Fleming. Mr. Fleming was first hired as a substitute custodian in 2013 and quickly moved into the night custodian role. And by 2014, Mr. Fleming became the head custodian of the high school where he remains today. Before coming to the North Ridgeville City Schools, Roger retired from the maintenance department at the Alaria City Schools. Roger has been nominated by several of his colleagues and actually is the only one of our 600-plus employees that has been nominated every month by different individuals. And so some of the remarks made on his behalf.
You gotta keep up with this.
Some remarks made on his behalf. Roger goes above and beyond his daily duties, greeting students with a smile and a "Have a great day." He takes such pride in the high school, doing his best to make this building the best it can be. A first-year teacher had this to say about Roger. "Since my very first day at NRHS, Roger has been so welcoming, kind and helpful when I needed it. He has become a friendly and familiar face to me very quickly and really made me feel comfortable here in North Ridgeville. He exemplifies hard work, kindness and family." Congratulations Roger and thank you for your dedication.
Look at you standing there, Sonny. Okay, let's do pose, I got it.
So I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of our parents, our staff members and our students who nominated our staff members this week. I would encourage you to continue to do so as your kind words are so important to share with our staff members. It's such a wonderful way to recognize the hard work of our staff and identify them as the positive leaders and role models that they are for our district. So again, congratulations to Miss Tonason and Mr. Fleming. Thank you.
Well, you get the opportunity to read all of the nominations that come in and it is just amazing to see what our parents, our staff members say about each other, community at large and what it is they have to share about some of the amazing people that we have here on staff. And there are so many to choose from and it is so challenging, but I do know that Alyssa and Roger are outstanding examples of, you know, what it means to be an employee here in North Ridgeville City Schools and I couldn't be more excited to work alongside each of them every day. So thank you both very much. As I welcome Mr. King back to the podium, I just want to announce this is a very short presentation, a little bit about what's happening at our academic center, but there will be a short intermission just after this where we're gonna take photos of our Students of the Month and our Employees of the Month, just to let you know that. And then you can all either stay if you choose or you may be dismissed if you also have Taco Tuesday to catch.
This is a challenge, I don't know if I'm ready for Taco Tuesday event. Letting me come up and share a bit about the academic center. Some of this is review for most of the crowd, but just wanted to give a few updates about operations and then get into the good stuff. So last year was our first year as a three-eight building in total. Before that, it was a three-four, but then also a five-eight. We tried out a couple of different arrangements last year and then this year we went with the house system for the three-four, the five-six and then the seven-eight, assigning an associate principal with each, assigning a school counselor with each and a secretary with each. And it has gone incredibly well. I am incredibly pleased with the group that we have. Mr. Maurer has had to take a leave due to a health concern in his home. Wish him and his family the very best. Sandra Kozelko has stepped in and helped us out and her arrival is already paying off immensely. Just her kindness, her attitude, her understanding, her compassion for students is off the charts. I will also recognize that we have a few other new folks that joined us this year in the office crew. Grace Tikkemeyer is our seminar counselor. Outstanding counselor, just you never know that she wasn't with us for many, many years prior. And in our secretarial crew, Ms. Sanchez was with us last year. Ms. Dresden, Ms. Rock and Ms. Jackson. Ms. Jackson's not new to the district, but new to the building. So a few new folks in the office system. Going on, the next slide talks about intervention enrichment. This was created last year and with all things, we kind of had to try a few things out. This year, it seems to be working very well. The first round of intervention was working with language arts and now we have transitioned into math as we're now on to our second round of interventions. And the reason the Legos are there is because anybody can collect Legos or data, anybody can sort them, can do it all the way, however you want. You can arrange them, you can present them however you want, but to actually make something with them takes a lot of good work. And many of our teachers are taking that time from their inventions, taking a look at their data, putting it back into their classroom instruction, but then also doing the reverse. What did or didn't work in a classroom instruction, how can we help them get better through the intervention enrichment period? Also to note it there is our Character Strong program. We work with Character Strong every Monday during that same period. Character Strong is a great program. It works incredibly well for our younger folks and our seventh and eighth grade, they're getting a good understanding. They get the idea of what it means to be character strong because of some of the high school folks that you're learning about earlier, being Ranger Strong. They understand that there is a good relationship on how they can be better citizens within the academic center. Okay, then that leads us right into PBIS and Miss Tonason, if it was not for Miss Tonason, I would be up to my eyeballs in bags and PBIS store purchases. Why, you ask? Because so far this year alone, just in a few months, we've had 3,000 purchases through our PBIS store because of points our students have earned. It has been fantastic. Included in our PBIS was our Anti-Bullying Week that we backed off with high school and we also had our first two kickoff assemblies with grades five and six. We had PBIS assembly, you know, talking about what it means to be Ranger Strong, what it means to be part of the community, what it means to be looking out for others more than just ourselves. With that, I have got to thank our PTO boosters. We did keep two organizations as we put three-eight together. PTO's three-four, boosters five-eight. Our PTO boosters do so much for us and what I was saying about PBIS and boosters, they upfront back in August guaranteed us $5,000 to support the PBS store. And if it wasn't for that, PBS would look markedly different. You would figure something out. We would make it happen, but their generosity has just been incredible. And as it says there as well, triathlon, field trips, staff treats, et cetera. And a pitch for all those who are listening, our next meeting is on the 16th at 6:30 in the 58 library. So anybody who wants to come, you're more than welcome. We got a lot of great things going on at the academic center. So getting into some of the fun and academic parts of our building, we had a great start with Hello Week, week of September 19th. That comes off of the Sandy Hook Foundation. Trying to get people to understand that just because you don't know who somebody is doesn't mean you can't engage, doesn't mean you can't say hello, doesn't mean you can't welcome them or sit at their lunch table or just be kind. So start with Hello Week was recognized all throughout the building and we have various projects, as you can see on the screen. Big shout out to Nikki Ross in the back for her help on many of our various projects that we do. I can see the CAPS project and we'll get to the Buddy Bench here in a little bit. It was a great way to get kids out of their little bubble, meeting other kids, working on projects, making posters, sharing what they believe in, you know, what they, how they believe that they can be kind and build a better academic center. At the bottom, you can see the family, the Fleming family helped support the creation of our Buddy Bench. We collected all the CAPS last year and through their generosity, those CAPS... We collected all the CAPS last year, and through their generosity, those CAPS were formed into a Buddy Bench for us. And the picture on the lower right was all of our children out on the field to celebrate the, basically the kickoff to Start With Hello Week, which is very cool. So yes, we do fun, and we also do some learning, just some odds and ends pictures that I love that I encounter and get to be a part of every day. We have literature honeycombs there on the left, which was our Honors Language Arts class, seeing how literature fits. And not just because page two comes before page three. No, no, how does the idea fit? You know, does this character fit with the story? How does he fit with the story? By understanding that he wears a red blazer, does that mean he's going to be the one who does something important later? It was a great activity encouraging higher level thinking. And then the second picture, we have the student block box. It was a breakout box for math classes called Unlocking Math Concepts. Very cool names. And of course, in the bottom middle, we have one of our students leading their reading time because, you know, we need to be able to lead to read and read to lead. So Rangers in action there. At the top, we have a lot of real-world learning. That's Miss Geither from our Technology Department talking about your end safety and security. And one of my favorite projects that I came across with Mr. Cadel on the bottom right, he had his students designing websites for a national park of their choice, focusing on what they would like to do in that national park. I begged and begged and begged all of them to do the Cauca Valley because it's literally my backyard, but yeah, they like bears a little more. They like mountains a little more. Oh. All right, so we talked about learning. I'm going to talk a little bit more. Here's some more of those revisions we worked on last year and so far this year to up our game quite a bit. The Intervention Enrichment time, the tutoring this year is going to have a math focus. We greatly restructure our TBT and BLT, and we are still restructuring under the guidance of DLT. Social Studies had their textbook adoption last year. ELA is up this year. The rollout and implementation of units of study came towards the end of last year. Now it's being used with Fidelity. The addition of Project Lead the Way, which I'll get to in just a minute. And under the leadership of our Student Services Department, a very solid push in joining our students with needs into the mainstream curriculum because it is absolutely the right thing to do. Project Lead the Way is a really, really cool set of classes where students get to do hands-on activities and understand real-world learning. As you can see, it kinda looks like a mousetrap Goldberg design over there, but they were designing roller coasters over on the left. And then at the very top, they were actually working on a propulsion experiment for flight in space. Trying to figure out what gases could propel a plane, propel a balloon, hell, whatnot. And then translate that idea for planes, jets, et cetera. On the upper right, our very own Mrs. Somerville signed up on her own to join the Civil, civilian air patrol because of this class. And because she joined the civilian air patrol, she was able to get us, I believe, three flight simulators. So that's a great addition to that class, absolutely for free. And then on the bottom right, our students using drones as part of the technology of the course. And the very bottom picture in the middle is our space cadet teacher, I mean, our wonderful teachers who teach the courses. Those were the Halloween costumes trying to fit in with the idea of Project Lead the Way dimension. Next up, I know we already talked about the district report card and then individual building report card. I cannot begin to tell you how proud I am of the students and staff at the academic center for the work they did, especially, you know, thinking last year, our third graders last year had not been in school truly half of first and most of second grade, and here they are coming into third. And to be able to achieve and show the improvement and the progress that they were able to last year is a testament to how hard our students work, to the great support of the families, and the Herculean effort of the district staff and the building staff to put all the curriculum technology in place to make that learning happen. So thank you for everybody, or to everybody that was part of that great achievement. Achievement was four out of five stars, meaning we, our students learned more than one year. Progress was five out of five. That means we greatly exceeded state expectations and gap closing was five out of five stars. Again, greatly exceeding state expectations. Next up is a very cool class. Rangers, yeah, sorry. Ranger Service. This is something, I'm not a fan of study hall. I think study halls go out the window, and you're able to do that for quite a number of students. Ranger Service was a class we developed at the end of last year to work with students to give something back if they chose to. We have about 110 students every day who are part of Ranger Service, and the whole idea is how can they do, how can they give back to the building? They volunteer in the office, they volunteer in classrooms, they volunteer with custodians, they volunteer outside, they volunteer in the cafeteria, in the gyms, et cetera. The picture of the young man, young woman outside, they were delivering thank you notes to the bus drivers, you know, saying, hey, you know what? As part of this, we need to understand we're part of the bigger North Ridgeville community. So that was their task that day for Ranger Service. So pretty cool idea of Rangers giving back. As you guys know, there's always something going on at the academic center. We have a ton of sports, a ton of clubs, and I'm trying to stay under five minutes, so I'm going to hurry up a little faster. We have, of course, a great number of teams. We had buddy walks while the weather's still warm. We hope that sticks around for quite a while. We have so many groups and clubs, student council, art club, history club, mock trial, National Junior Honor Society. We are very blessed that we have the number of students engaged in the number of activities that we do. Very sad ending came this Monday. I was waiting for Clifford the big red dog. He didn't show. I was sad. I'd always hoped you'd come, you know, galloping up, but both 5-8 and 3-4 had their book fairs. And it's always interesting to see what the kids spend their money on, and I think this was the first year that more kids bought books than they bought the little trinkets. So as a parent, that is very exciting. And we're getting close to the end, I promise. We're definitely not a spooky big place. We are a very cool, fun place. We brought back our costume contest for 5-8 this year. We had some really cool, interesting outfits. As you can see, the staff also got involved. We had quite a few different staff outfits. It was neat that we had Elvis show up. I've seen Elvis in a number of years, but that was pretty darn cool. And we know that as the academic center, we are a pretty big place, but we also know that we are all part, we are a part of the school district. So we like to make sure that we are continuing to play that part. The upper left was some of the CAPS from our collection that we put with the One North Ridgeville campaign. On the bottom right, I know it kinda looked, there's a gentleman getting into his child locker. We had 1,600 parents come to open house. Thank goodness, buildings and grounds didn't get on the case because we used every parking spot, I think, within three miles. It was awesome. We have a lot of spirit. You can see the young ladies with the blue and gold spirit dots. We probably about once every other week have different classes that are, they wanna chalk positive statements on the sidewalk. And a little pitch for my own son who came to the event at the high school a few weeks ago. Which is super cool that the kids were able to see all the different equipment and meet many of the board members. A quick commercial for the Amazing, Amazing Shape, which is coming up on the 3rd. I hope you guys got to see our staff on Channel 3. It was super cool. The 7th graders were preparing for about the last month and a half, getting ready for that really worthwhile, real-world competition, learning the skills that are absolutely necessary to take them into the future. And then last but not least, a giant thank you to so many different people that help us out at the academic center every day. You know, thanks to the board for letting us, you know, get to the stage to brag about the wonderful school that we have, for giving us this building and letting us use it to its max capacity. To Superintendent, you know, everything that she does is students-first. We love doing that. Sir Cassini, what's him? He helps us get every little ounce out of every little dive, and trust me, it is gratefully appreciated. Mr. Pryd, who is our sounding board on more issues than you could ever imagine. You know, he probably sees my phone number and goes, oh, yeah, he hasn't called yet. That's good to talk to, I hope. And like, Ms. Hostetler was talking about the hiring and whatnot. We had some amazing hires in '21, '22 was another goldmine. Mr. Younger, I never knew that he was a DJ, but he came out with us. He was our DJ for Start With Hello, which was awesome. And, you know, you wouldn't know it by looking at him, but my gosh, he can tell you anything you wanna know about boilers, towarbs, and everything else. And it has been fantastic to be able to work with him because life happens and things come up. Three more and I'm done. Ms. Vance, who worked so hard to give us every single resource for all of our students. We have just a great number of students for the resources that she provides, that the opportunities we're able to give them are measurable. Well, as, you know, going to our custodial crew. If we didn't know, if we didn't have the advancements of that understanding, those students wouldn't be able to do that. Our staff wouldn't be able to work with them in that manner. And it's because we have that partnership that those things are able to occur. Dr. Miller and her energy, the knowledge of the curriculum department is unbelievable, and her resources, oh my God, they're just phenomenal. And last but not least, Mr. Honmus, without his technology, we would be on Zoom. That's fantastic. So yeah, giant thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will we dismiss you for a brief break? We have any announcements this evening?
Mr. McCarthy, I just have one announcement. Very exciting day, one week from Election Day. I don't know if you guys probably can't see. You probably still can't see me. Odeon could be as tall as I am. Good evening, everyone. It's one week from Election Day. Is everyone excited? It's so important that you make a plan now to vote. So if you haven't voted yet, make your plan now. So what does that mean? You can vote early. The Board of Elections is open 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM every day this week, today through Friday. You're not gonna get there today, but you can get there anytime. Tomorrow through Friday, they're open until 7:00 PM. Saturday, November 5th, 8:00 to 4:00 PM. Sunday, November 6th, 1:00 to 5:00 PM. And Monday, November 7th, 8:00 to 2:00 PM. And if you miss any of those, go vote on Election Day, which is next Tuesday, November 8th. If you need to get to the Board of Elections, it's at 1985 North Ridge Road in Lorraine. So super quick, easy to get there from North Ridgeville. Couple things on the ballot that you might be interested in voting for. You decide what those might be. I can't tell you what they are. In the hallway, I could. But super important to vote if you haven't done so. And if you have an absentee ballot that you've filled out, you can just drive through that same location at the Board of Elections and drop it off 24 hours. They have a drop, secure drop location there. Please don't put that in the mail. At this point, it's too late. Please drive it up there. If you can't drive it up there, give it to me. I'll drive it up there for you. Okay, please go vote.
Nikki Beck and Ms. McCarthy. Next Tuesday, this community in North Ridgeville City Schools have an amazing opportunity to move this community and the school district in a direction that is a game changer. We've gotten all the information out. If you have any questions, please reach out. If you have any neighbors that have questions, reach out to the sources. Get factual information in everybody's hands, so come Tuesday, they can vote from a place of fact and knowledge. I want to thank all those that have run this campaign. This is the last meeting before this election, and to say this is by far the best-run campaign I've ever seen is an understatement. And coming from a political family that runs campaigns at the state, local, and federal level, this has been nothing short of amazing. The videos, the informations, the letters to the editors. I don't know what other information we possibly could have gotten out there, but they've done an amazing job. The city, our mayor, Kevin Corpren, our superintendent, Max Ancasario, the administrative team, our staff, Citizens for Better Schools, individuals. I mean, I can't even begin to list all those people that made this campaign so successful. And come Tuesday, I'm looking forward to celebrating the passage. I'm not gonna worry about saying it out there. Vote and support. Unapologetically, vote and support because it is a game changer for the city schools and the community. You've been asking for some of these things. We're gonna save the community $18 million by joining partnership with this. The state's gonna reimburse us. If not now, I challenge you as to win. There's no better opportunity to move this city forward, and I hope you come out and support on Tuesday. And if you can't come out and support, please vote on Wednesday. But again, thank you to all those that put in so much time and effort into making this a successful campaign. And the Boyners, I've known you forever. Jake, thank you for making me feel old. I remember the first and red days. Congratulations to our staff and our students of the month. Amazing group of young people, amazing staff members here at North Ridgeville City School. So Taco Tuesday, it's on the Boyners. Thank you. All right, here's an opportunity for hearing of the public. If anybody in attendance would like to address the Board of Education, now's your opportunity. Everybody can slow down one at a time. See you in a while. We will move on to the consensus agenda. We have an education report, Ms. Tanira.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the supervised overnight field trip for the North Ridgeville High School 9 through 12 grade cheerleading team to travel to Springfield, Ohio for OHSAA Spirit State Competition, championships, championships. This trip is set for December 9th, 2022, or December 10th, 2022.
Thank you. Communications report, Supremacy.
It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following gifts with appreciation. $15 was donated by Jennifer Hicks through the Charities Aid Foundation of America Employee Giving Campaign to North Ridgeville City Schools. A monetary donation of $735 was donated by NRHS Band Boosters for the Pride Committee. A monetary donation of $449 was donated by the NRHS Athletic Boosters to purchase an applied pad for the North Ridgeville High School track team. A monetary donation of $1,625 was donated by NRHS Athletic Boosters to purchase boys' basketball uniforms for the high school basketball team. A monetary donation of $3,575, yes, $5, donated by NRHS Athletic Boosters to purchase a pitching machine for the high school baseball and softball team. $2,700 was donated by NRHS Athletic Boosters to purchase a girls' basketball team travel gear for the North Ridgeville High School basketball teams, girls' basketball teams. And Miss Lane's school supplies donated by the visiting family to Ranger High Tech Academy. Yeah, $150 was donated by Sean Fleming for NRHS Seniors Night Tailgate School Events. $775 was donated by the NRC PTO boosters to purchase PBIS store prizes for students at the North Ridgeville Academic Center. And $1,000 was donated by the Ranger High Tech Academy PTO for teamwork supplies for the school. We thank our committee for the tremendous support of our schools and students.
Thank you. Human Resources Report, Ms. Saxo.
Yes, we have a number of items in the Human Resources Report. One administrate, one administrative staff leave of absence, one certified staff leave of absence, one support staff leave of absence. This is the first reading for these items. The second reading and consideration for approval will be at This is the first reading for these items. The second reading and consideration for approval will be at the November 13th regular meeting. This concludes the Human Resource Report.
Thank you. Ms. Tamira, an education report?
We have one more thing. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the supervised overnight field trip for the North Ridgeville High School nine through 12 grade boys' basketball players to travel to Mansfield, Ohio for a high school basketball scrimmage. This trip is set for November 11th, 2022, or November 12th, 2022. And as it's pressing for time, I move to approve the education report in one read. Second.
By Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
This is Tamira.
Yes.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Greigsby?
Yes.
This is Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Human Resources Report, Ms. Saxon.
Yes, we have a few items to consider under the Human Resources Report. One certified staff resignation, one certified staff leave replacement resignation, three support staff resignations, one support staff resignation, one certified staff appointment, one certified building substitute appointment, one support staff appointment, one support staff substitute appointment, one support staff termination. I move to approve the Human Resources Report in one reading. Second.
By Ms. Saxon, second by Ms. Tamira. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
This is Saxon.
Yes.
This is Tamira.
Yes.
Mr. Greigsby?
Yes.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
It is recommended that the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of public employees and matters related to negotiations of public employees. There will be no actions to follow.
Moved. Second.
By Ms. Saxon, second by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, please.
This is Saxon.
Yes.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Greigsby?
Yes.
This is Tamira?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Seven of three.
Everybody, thank you for joining us this evening.
Have a good night.